All right, we're moving on to items from the Commission. And the first one is in a discussion of possible action initiating code amendments to City Code Chapter 25-2 relating to the creation of a new zoning district. And for these items, I just want to say, I let you guys, let us go a little free form on these, but I'd like to do this in a little more structured manner. We'll give five minutes to the sponsors. And then we'll move into our eight and five Q and A, if that's enough. If we need a few more, we can allow that. And then we'll, this is actually posted as, yes, possible action. So then we can decide, you know, if we have a motion to make, we can do that. So let's kind of stick with the same structure to move things along. So I'd like to hear from Commissioners Anderson and Maxwell, giving us kind of some background on this proposed code amendment.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so not that long ago, we were all voting on a couple of cases where we were keeping LI, light industrial, in parts of Austin that we've been trying to get rid of light industrial for a long time. In some of these cases, we were actually going from a zoning category that was not light industrial to light industrial, only to then condition out light industrial uses and then allow residential. Now, so much of that has to do with the backwards gymnastics of a 1984 land development code that is very, very out of date. This body, city staff, have done amazing, amazing things trying to change that, but here we are. So this item is a tool to provide some context-sensitive relief to the failures of our 1984 code. Current zoning tools are outdated. We haven't been able to update them. This is an attempt to get finer tools here in Austin. So this item is reverse engineering LI, PDA, where here in this room, we've used a couple of times where we didn't want to, but we did because it was kind of the only tool we had to do what we were trying to do, which was add housing in areas that needed housing. This will address zoning on a case-by-case basis in a context-sensitive manner. Nothing is mapped. This will only come up as individual zoning cases, notification and petition rights are unchanged. This does not include parkland dedication, environmental regs, water, wastewater drainage, transportation, with the exception of parking, signage, only zoning and parking. I hope that you all are looking at the backup. If you haven't looked at it yet, please go ahead and pull it up. We'll talk about it here in a second. Let's see. But it does include compatibility, zoning overlays, height, parking, et cetera. So we're going to tighten up uses. So right now, we have CS, which is so suburban, I think we spent 20 minutes today, throwing a conditional overlay on taking a lot of the nonsense that CS has in it out. This wouldn't have that. The base zoning here, the base zoning would be a very activated zoning category is very 100% what you would want to see in the middle of a city type uses. So if in a zoning overlay, there's a restriction, it's to be included. And now, let's go ahead and look at the backup. So I have the backup right here, so town zoning, yes.
Can we bring the backup?
Oh, excellent. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. So we're just talking a little bit about kind of the troubles we've had here in this body and our limited tools to choose from. And we go ahead and set, now, this is just for staff to consider as a starting point, obviously. If they have ways to make this better, then those are encouraged. But this has a base zoning standard. And the reason that is, is because when we, if somebody gets this zoning and then later on, they sell that property and they decide not to use a bonus, then you kind of have to have that base zoning standard there. If they do have a bonus, then the height will be dictated within that zoning ordinance that was first created where that property received town zoning designation. And it has a couple of other things just here for base zoning. It allows for site development standard modifications, but only in Chapter 25-2, Subchapter C, and Chapter 25-6, Appendix A. And we started off with that, this includes the affordable housing requirement of 10%. So one of the issues we've had here, so expand a little bit more. So this is, you know, something in the middle of a PUD on one end, the most extreme, kind of most expensive thing that takes the longest, huge impact on staff, and the PDA, that light industrial PDA that we've been doing here for a couple of times, that pretty much only attaches to LICH and maybe MI, I'm not sure, but not to CS or MF. It's been used a little bit more liberally here as of late. We've used it in areas of town we don't really want to. But PDA does not allow for the modification of compatibility or require affordable housing. I think we were here looking at the board in case not that long ago, where we were just trying to see, is there going to be an offering of affordable housing? And Andrew was there, "Don't ask, don't ask, you're not allowed to ask. They can only offer." And then finally, finally, the applicant was like, "Yeah, and there's going to be some affordable housing." And we're like, "Okay, fine, great, this is great." So this will be very different in that it will already be a part of that case when it first comes to us. And then I'll let my co-sponsor jump in, if she wants to jump in at all.
Yes, I was excited to co-sponsor this. I think sometimes watching these planning commissions, and then now actually sitting up here, we understand that the cases that come before us can be quite complex. And having the opportunity to feel like there's answers for our applicants before they even come to us, that give them opportunities to work around what is the complexity of our very outdated land development code. So knowing that they can work with staff, that these opportunities there, so that when the case comes to us, we can feel good about what we're approving. Really, as Commissioner Anderson mentioned, this is a tool in a toolbox to help us work with what we have, because we know that those big, broad strokes of reform are probably not happening. So let's try to give ourselves some opportunities to really feel like this is a good way to work around the complexities that we see as commissioners when the cases come before us. And I think the other thing I like to emphasize is that we'd like staff to really carefully consider how this comes back to us. You know, that's what this really is, is an opportunity to see, what does that tool look like if we're putting it in our toolbox? Is it a wrench? Is it a screwdriver? You know, there's some finessing we can do with this, once we give staff a chance to actually look at it. And then I think we will have the opportunity to really consider, is this something we want to add to our zoning?
Okay, thank you. And Commissioners can correct me if I'm wrong, but just so everybody knows, the process is, this would go, if we vote on it tonight for action, it would then go to staff. And then staff would kind of cobble together the actual ordinance language in a draft form, and it would come to the Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee, then the Planning Commission, and then on to council for approval. Is that the correct process?
Correct.
So this is just a starting point? And all of you are with this process? It is available to anyone here. If you have a bright idea, you get a, you know, you get a co-sponsor and you can, we can move its changes along. And so I really appreciate you guys taking action to address a problem that was identified. So with that, do we have any questions? I know I have a few. I guess we can, let's just go around. Do we have any questions of the sponsors? Commissioner Cox, is your hand up?
So affordable housing, we can't make that a requirement of the base zoning. That's illegal.
Correct.
And so this is related to site development standard modifications. But what I don't understand is the LI PDA, aren't developers already volunteering affordable housing to basically convince us to zone something light industrial with the PDA attachment? So isn't this kind of a regression of what we're seeing now come before us in terms of affordable housing on LI PDA projects?
I think Ms. Harden has a response. It's inside Gepther.
We see staff coming up. We'll let staff answer that before we do. It's a good question.
Can you hear me? Okay. And think of a few things with that. There have been a lot of LI PDA cases that do not have an affordability component. It is not required. If they do do affordability component, it is with a private developer or, you know, private entity, which is nothing wrong with that, but I think this is for the city can enforce, like a VMU. So the city enforces VMU, and if it's a LI PDA, it has to be done with a private developer in a private agreement. And again, I want to say, many LI PDA cases do not even have an affordability component. And as you all know, staff cannot require that to occur. And so what I'm hearing from Commissioner Anderson is that this would be like a density bonus program, would require the city, like a VMU program, so to speak. And so it would require affordable housing, and it would not be through a private agreement, which you may or may not get, because we can't enforce that or can't require that.
Okay. And I'm curious, these site development standard modifications, I mean, that's the whole, that's a whole lot of stuff in there that's going to cause a lot of consternation to a lot of people. So I'm just curious if the, if Commissioner Anderson or someone else can elaborate on what they mean by allowing town zoning to modify site development compatibility standards, overlays and combining districts, and parking requirements, including everything in those two sections?
So I want to be perfectly clear, this is not ideal, not ideal in any way. Ideal would be us working as a city, spending 10,000 hours on a new comprehensive plan that calls for a new land development code, and us spending 10 years in passing a new land development code. This gets us a lot of the way in a lot of those moments of progress that we were having in a new land development code. Of course, that was going to go ahead and map it in all of Austin, and this doesn't do that. So this comes up short, very short, from a new land development code. But this will help us get a lot of housing units and whatever else makes sense for certain sites, in places where we can't do those things today because we don't have the tools to do them.
Well, and speaking of tools to do them, why wouldn't we just apply like the VMU bonus requirement to something like this, rather than having a whole separate site development standard modifications for just this particular zoning?
There are a number of places where VMU just doesn't work, which is one of those main reasons we've seen a lot of LI PDAs. And it's another reason, I've talked to a lot of folks who own certain parcels of land who just aren't doing anything with them, but they're perfect sites for a lot of housing, a lot of transit-supported density, a lot of tax space for the city of Austin. And I've approached a lot of people, talking about this ordinance and other things. And what they've pretty much told me, quite a few of them, is we're waiting for the city to have a better code that actually wants us to develop our land. And so until then, these are parking lots, these are gas stations, these are places that can't be developed under current code.
And just to respond to your question, Commissioner Cox, so VMU, even with the use of VMU-2, only allows a maximum height of 90 feet. So that was kind of the concern that we were having with PDA, with the LI PDA, that we could not go to the height, which was being asked by the applicant, at 120 feet. So the height is one limitation. The other limitation that also occurs with VMU-2 is exactly as Commissioner Anderson was saying. So VMU was always meant to be used on certain corridors, which always has led to this sort of issue where we do see staff often does not recommend it because of corridor access, because that is indeed what is in the code, and then Planning Commission often goes ahead and approves it because we see that there's other benefits to it.
Okay. So Commissioners with additional questions?
Chair, a quick wrap-up on that last question, which was a good one. VMU Austin is only for residential, doesn't modify compatibility, and it only goes to 90 feet, in the best-case scenario.
Okay, thank you. All right. And just a reminder, this just kicks it off. Staff is going to look at this and consider it, and bring us something hopefully better to review. I'm sure they will. Any other questions? Commissioner Muschallar.
I'm really excited. You guys are taking the initiative to at least get this discussion going. Yeah, I kind of feel silly that we haven't done something while we've been sitting complaining, "We don't have the tools, we don't have the tools." We do, and that's initiating, which is great. I have a few questions. I don't know, we're time-limited, so I want to try and go quickly. And just looking at where you guys started from, looking at the FAR and the impervious cover, if we are crafting a beginning tool, is what about giving an opposite kind of opportunity as well, where the FAR goes higher, but the impervious cover goes lower? Because we also hear about the concerns, depending on where we might apply this, right? If we want it to be able to use around the city, then the issues are going to change depending on where the site is. And so I'm worried about such a heavy impervious cover with low FAR, and then getting into water runoff concerns, things like that, depending on where we might be able to apply this. That was one of my thoughts. And y'all can comment, or we can talk about maybe if there's opportunity to tweak it and give us some more tool there to leverage. And then my other concern goes back to what Commissioner Cox brought up, is there thought on a mechanism? Because my understanding also was that the affordability could not be tied to a zoning request per se, that that was at the state level, but I may not understand that. So I honestly, just asking questions. Thanks. And thanks for what you guys have done.
No, good question. And love for others to jump in on this also. But that is definitely something this tool could allow, and it's going to allow for that type of flexibility. Where this impervious cover comes from is, you know, what I'm envisioning, and, you know, there will be cases that are different than this, of course, but, you know, this is already the, you know, I see that you see in CS, in a lot of the urban areas that we're looking at right now. But all of these would definitely require water detention, water storage, water quality. So we'd be talking about the redevelopment of sites that, for the most part, probably don't have those water features and those environmental features, that all the redevelopment would require. I see Commissioner Zawar was about to jump in as well.
I was just going to add, Commissioner Muschallar, to your question. So yes, indeed, we cannot require any amount of affordable set aside as part of any zoning category, but as a voluntary incentive offered, so anybody can volunteer to either take this as it is, or use whatever their base zoning allows them to do, that is within their sort of right. And so based on those incentive programs, we can require above and beyond what we believe somebody would willingly be willing to offer. And so the way it would be seen is essentially the way when first VMU program was created, was a new zone, but either the neighborhood mapped it onto certain places where they again had the choice to either go ahead and develop to base standards, or do separately to whatever those higher standards were voluntarily. In this scenario, it would be the same, and then we're able to rezone to it if that indeed is the will of the applicant. That is my understanding.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Thompson.
I think it's also important that, you know, even though the zoning category is 95% impervious cover, just as we did tonight on the piece of land where we said there's a CO that we're only going to go to 80% impervious cover, we would always have that option if it were in a sensitive area or there were environmental constraints.
And this in no way trumps pieces of code that are outside of these chapters. So for instance, SOS, items like that, those would still require a PUD.
Any more questions? Commissioner Cox, I'll let you go one more time.
I've actually got a question for staff. Because this is, this is kind of blowing my mind a little bit. You know, I've always thought of us like tweaking things here or there, but this is actually just a complete introduction of a brand-new, almost-clean-slate zoning category. Well, the practical logistics of that, is that not a concern to staff versus something like some sort of combining district? Or does that really not, practically speaking, bureaucratically speaking, process-speaking, does that not really matter to y'all?
Commissioner, I can't answer that question. We're going to have to take this and look at it. I can't, I've only vaguely looked at it, and we have to look at this collectively in each division, in each department. I think the chair laid out, it's going to have a thorough review by many different departments and divisions within departments. So, and we have a lot of tweaks, some y'all may support, some you may not. So I just can't really answer that, as I haven't delved into it. And then me, myself, can answer it anyway. This has to be a staff recommendation, as you know. So we can look at that, and, you know, I'll be happy to give you some staff's perspective and feedback. But I think that this just being initiated is the starting point, and we're willing to look at it and vet it and give our feedback and the like.
And on that point of just initiating it, I don't know if it's you, Chair, or I'm sure Commissioner Zawar knows this like the back of his hand, or someone else. The process, if the Planning Commission votes to move this forward, could someone highlight the process? Staff reviews it, what the timeframe is for that, it comes back to us. Then what happens? Then what happens? Then what happens?
Sure. I was just going to say, so yes, if we initiate it today, it goes to staff for essentially drafting the ordinance. There is no timeline associated with that. Staff will do it based on essentially their workload. We leave it to them to decide at which point, once they have a draft ready, it goes to the Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee. Once approved from there, it comes to Planning Commission. Once approved from here, it goes to council for final approval. And that's sort of the process that gets enacted.
And I would just add, you guys are responding to the council priorities, so, you know, wherever this kind of falls, it could take some time, depending on what priorities of council.
Correct me if I'm wrong, yes, I was just going to add, when it comes back to us a piece, we would have the opportunity to add amendments and make tweaks at that point as well.
Yes, as long as it is within the scope of what was initiated.
And real quick, so I have talked to a couple of council members. I was curious if any of them wanted to run with this, just because there's a lot of conversations about how do we improve our broken land development code? And what I heard back resembling in conversations was, "This is awesome, let's move it forward." And I was like, "Well, is it better if it comes from council?" To which I was told, "We can call staff just as well as y'all can initiate something, and y'all can call staff." So I know that there's excitement in this building for this zoning category. And Commissioner Cox, you have a good point, which is, we haven't done many things like this over the past 10 years. The last one I did was a change of UNO to go to 300 feet and to eliminate parking requirements. And the only reason I did that, as we were rewriting the land development code, is because that was one of those little sections of the code that we weren't touching, because that was an already existing, very good overlay. And so that was something that was outside of the code rewrite process, and so that's why we initiated that. There is 15 to 20 years of deferred maintenance on this broken land development code. So if we are stuck for whatever reason and unable to do comprehensive land use reform, then this body and city council are going to have to start making a lot more changes to the broken code that we have, to get it less broken, to serve more folks.
So, did you have something to say, Commissioner Haynes? Okay, all right. All right, well, let's go ahead and, anybody have a motion?
I do.
Commissioner Anderson, did you speak?
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. I motion to initiate the creation of town zoning category consistent with backup, encouraging alternatives that yield a greater amount of housing.
All right, do we have a second? Do you want a second sponsor? Okay, Commissioner Maxwell. Want to add anything else, Commissioner Anderson?
I've spoken enough, but the very quick thing I'll add is an ABJ article this week talking about the fastest-growing neighborhoods in Austin. You can't see it, I know camera, sorry. But 12 of the 25 fastest-growing neighborhoods in the Austin metro are roughly 10 miles north of Round Rock. We're not building enough housing, and whatever we can do to change that and get transit-supported density on the ground, we've got to do, and this is a great tool to help us get there.
All right. Any speakers against this motion? You want to speak to the motion, Commissioner Maxwell?
I just want to add that I feel like this is a really forward-looking opportunity for us. And considering what we're trying to do in terms of our infrastructure in the city and how we're growing and changing, this is the right move for council, for commission.
Okay, any others in favor? Commissioner Muschallar? Go ahead.
May I offer, and I don't know if it's an amendment or a change, so I might need some help. But what I'd like to do is see if we can leave this, before we send it, have an opportunity to maybe work, I love this idea, it's like Jane, lightbulb. But I think it's pretty broad to send to staff, and I'd like it to be a tool that we can apply outside of some of the denser areas as well. And so I think maybe we just need to leave a little bit of time to look at it, maybe add some language, or move it around a little bit, and then send it to staff. They're a very limited resource, too, so I'd like to fine-tune it a little, at least give them some direction before we send it on. And if we could add stuff, amendments, or whatever, over the next, till our next meeting or whatever. I'm looking for a way to do that.
So what I'm hearing, that would be a postponement to a certain date? Is that what I'm hearing? Postpone action on this?
I mean, I want to send it forward, but I'd like to, if that's what, if that's my only mechanism, then I would say postpone to our next meeting and get your amendments in before the next meeting. Is that effective, Andrew, enough time or not?
Well, let's go ahead. I guess I need a clear amendment, I mean, an amendment. And it sounds like it might be somewhat of a substitute. I don't know if the motion maker wants to delay.
Okay, sorry.
No, the staff that I've talked to, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that it's kind of presumptuous to say what this would look like. And at this point, this is just moving forward with direction of what is a very urban zoning. And so maybe I'm hearing from the commissioner that there's a need for a missing-middle-type zoning, which I totally agree. I don't know that this would be that tool, but I'd be very supportive of that tool, if that could be proposed here at the dais.
So let's go ahead, and so could you state your motion so that we can see if we get a second? I just, people need...
So I guess then I'm requesting a substitute motion to postpone to our next meeting and have amendments submitted.
All right.
Or suggestions to be considered by the commission at the next meeting.
Okay. So that would be, what's our next meeting, May?
No, do we have?
April 25.
April 25. Okay. All right, postpone the 25th. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a question?
If it's related to the motion being made, not of staff, we're done with that. So if it's to the motion maker.
I'm trying to understand what the backup represents in the motion? And also, the original motion is, because, and let me do two seconds to clarify. So when council sends something like this, they usually basically tell staff, "This is what we want to come out of it." And then staff will say, "Well, yeah, sure, but here's a bunch of feedback on that." Are we, by approving either Commissioner Muschallar's substitute motion or the original motion, are we telling staff that this is what we want to come back, like council does?
No, so on here, we did write, "Proposal for staff consideration." So this is just an idea, a place for them to consider, to start, just so they can understand, you know, so we don't have to talk about all these things and then them try to translate this conversation into a backup document. And this was also something that we could submit to the body four days ago, for everyone just to go ahead and to look at and start to get an idea of what we were thinking.
Yes, and you're not voting on this language in any way. What you're doing is voting on the initiation of the process. This is a suggested framework, but in no way are you saying, you know, by saying, "I support this," are you saying you agree with the terms in this document. It's more on initiation of the process.
Mr. Chairman, since I have to ask Commissioner Muschallar, since she's got the motion on the floor.
Yes.
As the new kid on the block, can you tell me approximately, are we talking about six weeks of staff review, six months of staff review? What kind of timeframe are we considering here? Or anybody else that wants to jump in?
Clarification, she was...
Yeah, that question was to me. I was going to say, no, on my motion, I want commissioners to help clean it a little bit, so there's more clear direction for staff, because it's going to go through every one of their departments, so that's a long process. So I'll let somebody else speak to that part, and that's about as much as I know.
Yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Anderson.
Yeah, so the initiation of this item, and then this going to city staff, they'll take the time that they need to get it right, and then they'll put it forward when they feel it's right. And then that'll be our chance to offer whatever amendments we feel we need to offer to make it work.
So it could come back looking significantly different to Codes and Ordnances Joint Committee, and then it comes back to the Planning Commission, and we can add, we can amend it, and we have very robust discussions, amendments at that time, people can, and will vote on all of those. So we have a lot of those very heavy, engaged sessions on code amendments, and that would be the opportunity where, to really add your thoughts.
So I'll, I'll second Commissioner Muschallar's motion for a specific reason that I'm happy to get into, if I can talk.
Chair, point of information, please. It's my understanding that the 25th is going to be a very, very heavily scheduled agenda. Could we hear from the liaison? Not that I want to postpone this, that's not what I'm, I think this is going to be an important tool, and that the commission should really consider it tonight, but...
Yeah, you are correct. We have a, in fact, we are, one of the items here is looking at another meeting in May to make up for our heavy agendas, so that's what we're looking at here.
So Chair, Commissioner, Liaison, Andrew Verri, yes, that is correct. You're looking at probably five to six discussion cases, two of them that are going to be fairly complexed.
complexed.
So the motion on the table, that was, did you second this, Commissioner Cox? Or were you asking clarifying questions? You did. So the motion on the table is to the 25th. I understand we do have a busy agenda, but we need to go ahead and vote on this motion to postpone. Let's go ahead. Any discussions for or against? Commissioner Cox, speaking in favor?
Yeah, I did second it. I was actually, I was trying to work through my head if there was a way to have some sort of, like, workshop discussion with staff on this, rather than just saying, here's a really, really broad framework, then in like six months, we get it back with some suggested changes, and then we just have to vote on it at that time and offer amendments, and not really have an opportunity to kind of work back and forth with staff? Is there a mechanism for that?
I think you're proposing something that we have not done. The process is, we initiate it, and staff comes back with their expertise on the code changes. We're not, I don't know, I'm not an expert in writing code, so we kind of, and this has a lot more detail and guidance, which you don't always get. Sometimes it's just a couple of sentences, kind of giving them direction. This gives a general framework, or a little more detail, but in no way is staff bound by this, you know, this, recommend these parameters, but I think they get the intent. So that's usually what we provide them, is intention and kind of what we're looking for, and they come back with the detailed code language. So what you're asking for is kind of somewhat of a more, it's kind of putting the backend on the front end to give more of that, you know, we want something to look at in code format, and then it goes to the Codes and Ordinances, which it does get quite a bit of discussion there with Zap, and amendments are added that we then see from that joint committee, and then we, that's when we get our turn. So that's the normal process. So I think by doing a lot of good homework here and giving a great idea, I think maybe you might have frightened a few people, Commissioner Anderson, on, oh, you know, giving them a little too much information. But let's go, we have a motion on the, to vote on the postponement, for commissioners to offer some tweaks to what we're looking at here. Any more speakers for or against? Commissioner Azar, go ahead.
I'll make this very, very quick. I just want to say, regardless of sort of the motion at hand and the conversation, I think planning commissioners should definitely feel that they should be able to provide feedback on any item. I just, I'm personally not in favor of seeing if we can get staff review on items, with the clarification that staff actually does not work for us. You know, council is slightly different, and the council members, staff members are different. We have a staff liaison whose job is to guide us through the actions that we have to take as a commission. And just looking at the workflow of staff, honestly, y'all, even as I initiate an item in a few minutes, they have somewhere around 35, 40 code amendments in the pipeline right now. So I just want to be very realistic. I don't think it would be fair to ask staff to then not just provide us their work in relation to code amendments, but also provide us feedback on our ideas. I don't think I would be comfortable with that, because just understanding that the workflow they have and the workload they have, I just want to support them, to get them to do the work that they need to do, particularly knowing that they have to respond from council requests and the work assigned to them by the city manager's office.
All right. Those speaking in favor? Commissioner Muschall.
That is exactly why we need a little bit of time to tighten it up. I think you just made my argument for me.
All right. Those speaking against? I will speak against, because this is, what this is, initiating the process, really what, I think what I'm hearing is forming a working group to then go away and come up with something better. That's kind of the process. Commissioner Cox, if you wanted that kind of workshopping, we would form a working group to go away and maybe flesh out more details for this recommendation for a code amendment. That would be kind of our normal process. So I'm not in favor of that. I think we need to get it in the queue with staff. That's my, that's all, put against this delay. All right. Those speaking in favor? Any more against?
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak against, but it's also, you know, I always try to slip in that question. I trust Commissioner Anderson, but he just told me that we'll have a chance if we want a, one of the things that Commissioner Cox said is, I guess, a workshop, or kind of my vernacular would be a halftime check-in. And even though I trust Commissioner Anderson, I'm verifying that if we do want a check-in with staff, we can ask for an update in July, August, and see how things are going. Is that the case? Mr. Chairman, or Commissioner Anderson?
Anyone's welcome to answer, but one of the things I was talking about there is, in codes and ordinances, staff does a good job of sharing with us where things are in the process and giving us updates on the different items that they're working on, all those types of things.
I have nothing to add. We are more than welcome to give an update. Yeah. Everything Commissioner Anderson said.
All right, so let's go and take a vote on the substitute motion to postpone the April 25th. Commissioner Muschall is seconded by Commissioner Cox. Those on the dais in favor of this motion to postpone? Seeing none, those on the screen in favor to postpone? All right, that's Cox and Muschall are those against the motion to postpone. So I'm going to make this easier on, I'm sorry, you're against? In favor or against?
Against.
Postpone, okay. All right, so that means, I'm going to make this easy on myself. We had two that were in favor of this substitute motion, Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Muschall. So that fails. Moving on to the main motion, and this is to move forward with, help me out, Commissioner Anderson, with item 19, with what you've provided is just a suggestion for staff.
Right. Motion to initiate the creation of town zoning category consistent with backup, encouraging alternatives that yield a greater amount of housing.
Okay, and that was seconded by Commissioner Maxwell. Do we need to speak to your motion at this point?
We tried to pass the land development code, it died in March of 2020. We've got to do what we can to get better density bonuses on the ground. We don't allow inclusionary zoning, but we do allow density bonuses, and when they don't yield what we need, that's on us, so let's change it.
Sorry, I think I already allowed you and Commissioner Maxwell to speak. So any, let me just, anybody opposed to this motion before we take a vote? Commissioner Muschall, are you on, are you muted? I can't tell if you're trying to say something.
Well, I'd like to understand this a little more. It's the first time we're seeing and discussing it. Or have you guys all already made up your mind, and you're just going to cast your votes?
We haven't, we're not voting on the, we're not voting on a code change, we're just voting on the initiation of the process.
I understand. I understand what we're doing.
All right. So we're, so you can speak to your opposition. That's where we're at. Do you want to speak in opposition?
I would like to understand a little more deeply what's going on. I ask those harder questions. I know my colleague says he's the newbie, but I feel like I am, because there are things I don't understand, and I don't feel ready to turn something around and initiate it without understanding. So I would like the motion maker to take a few moments to explain it at a very stupid level for me, so that I may understand, and then we can vote on it.
So we, I'm sorry, we are, we did our Q and A, we had the initial presentation. Do you have a specific question that you want answered? Because we got through the Q and A, we were out of questions, so I moved this along to motion-making. So I think we...
Thank you.
We had an opportunity to extend more questions, we didn't do that. Okay. So Commissioner Cox, are you, you want to speak in opposition, or?
I'm going to speak neutrally, whatever you want to classify it as. I'm going to vote to move this forward, because like, like the chair said, it's initiating a process. I do think, I do hope that if we see more of these come up, and I think this is great, we need to be having these discussions, but as we see here, the discussion is very limited by our rules and the process in a commission format. So my hope is that when we bring things up like this in the future, that maybe we don't have action taken the very first time we're seeing this, the very first time the sponsors are introducing this, so that we have the ability to have a little bit of more conversation before throwing this over to staff, and then not seeing it for six months, and then, you know, having to make decisions that possibly have very significant consequences at that time. So I am all for collaboration. Collaboration is not something that's easy to do in this format, so my suggestion is that in the future, maybe bring this up without an action the first time we see it, and then we can push it along the next meeting or something like that.
Okay, I can appreciate that. And there are, you know, within quorum, I'll use the word socialization, if there's a little more socialization that can be done in living within our quorum restrictions, please take advantage of that, so you get some feedback from a broader group of commissioners. I'm not sure, you know, who you guys talked to in putting this together, but yes, that would be an opportunity, maybe shop it with a few other folks. So I appreciate that comment. Okay, let's go ahead, unless there's any other debate, let's go ahead and move this to a vote. This is to move forward with the motion presented by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Maxwell, and those on the dais in support of this motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that's everyone, and those on the screen voting in favor? I see all green except Commissioner Muschall, extension, yellow, thank you. Okay, so that's passes. Where are we at, our number?
Chair, Commissioner liaison, I kind of got, who are the motion makers?
Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you.
And what was our number zero? Did you get the? 11 to 1. 11-0-1, thank you. All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next one.